I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for Thursday, September 6th, 2018. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to videotape or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, I would ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Good evening, anybody for weekly briefing? Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dave Gilman, Chief of Police. I just wanted to extend a great thank you to the groups that assisted making our annual Jailhouse BBQ a success. It was a beautiful sunny day. I think we probably had about, we estimate between 800 and 1,000 people come. Fantastic time, interaction between the visitors and residents alike in the community and the police department. I think it's a great tradition. But it wouldn't happen without the assistance of, you know, the people that donate a lot of the food items, such as Stop &amp; Shop and Georgia's for the clam chowder, Georgia's Fish Market, Lower Cape Ice. It was a warm day, so we needed a lot of ice. I'd like to, special thank you to Leo Kokounis for his usual arrival with the Petting Zoo, which was a big hit. This year also featured the SWAT Bearcat, which was a big draw. And we had a gigantic bouncy house, which was enjoyed by everyone, as well as the dunk tank. There was an ugly rumor going around that I was going to be in the dunk tank, but that turned out to just be an ugly rumor. So, I was happy about that. But obviously, and then, you know, thanks to everybody that came and helped make it a success, but also all the officers and significant others of, you know, the members of the department. It was a great time, so just wanted to say that.
Great, thank you, Chief. Hello, David.
David Blank, Deputy Fire Chief. Two things, reminder that this Tuesday is the 17th anniversary, September 11th? 18? Yeah, 17th? 18? 17th, yeah. And we will be having our traditional ceremony at headquarters. Arrival 9:45, ceremony starts at 10:00. And in good news, we received word from Congressman Keating's office that the fire act grant that we submitted for $70,000 for the fire department was approved. We should be getting a formal notification tomorrow. So that'll be used to upgrade all of our nozzles, hydrant valves, some desperately needed equipment, and it gives us the flexibility to do it all at once, so everything will be the same across all the trucks. So that was, that was nice to hear. It's been since 2012 that we've got a grant. So it's nice to finally be back in the dole.
Thank you, and that's great news, congratulations. Hi, Carolyn.
Hi, I'll go quick, thank you. I know this sounds a little early, but I wanted to just put out a plea for costumes for Halloween, for our boutique. We've been very fortunate in the past and had places donate quite a bit to us, and some of those places no longer exist, or have moved on, or are shutting down, which is very sad. But this is a really important event. There are a lot of young individuals in our community who need these things, and we give them away free. So we're going to be asking to partner with the Police and Fire Department, surprise, to see if we can have drop-off locations too. We'll put one in Town Hall, just people can drop off the costumes, we'll go around and get them. But I'm putting a plea out there, just in case people want to start thinking, maybe when you pick up one for your own child, if you have, can pick up an extra one, or if you go through your closet, it's a great time to clean out, and they really do go to the community who needs them. So, that will be coming up in October, but we'll start collecting right now, so, thank you.
Great, thank you, Carolyn.
Is that a yes? I see a big yes.
We're wearing those.
Anybody else for weekly briefing? Okay, we'll move on to public comments and announcements. Cindy?
Good evening, Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. Just a couple of quick things, actually, tonight. Wanted to thank everyone for the 10 weeks of a wonderful, successful, safe Port Summer Nights. We ended last night, 5 to 8, and had a great turnout of the local community, which was why we did last night and the last Wednesday in August. So thank you to the police, the fire, and everyone that did attend. Reminder, this Sunday is the parade. It begins at 11:30. Lineup is on Freeman and will travel down 28 to Doane, then we'll turn and go up south, cross over Sisson to south, and then we're ending at the Cultural Center. It'll go through the elementary school, and then we'll have a physical drop-off ending point. All of the floats that have people will be starting at the Chamber this year, opposed to coming from any long distances. And then, next weekend is the Cranberry Festival, and once again, the Chamber is happy with a lot of our community sponsors that have helped us continue the fireworks. So, it'll be next Saturday night, about 8:02 after the band. And then my last announcement and reminder is, once again, Saturday, September 22nd is the big fix. And a town team has been started. I'm going to finalize that tomorrow with the Housing Assistance Corporation and let Carol know, because she's been helping spearhead that. As well as Chair Julie Kavanaugh and myself will be at registration from 8:00 AM until 2:00 on Saturday. If you still want to be a part of it, please contact myself or the Housing Assistance Corporation. And there's still time to have a team, donate or volunteer that day.
Great, thank you very much, Cindy. Anybody else for, okay, oh, sorry, Ed.
Hello, I'm Francis Soluski, and I'm the Chairman of the Harwich Bike Ways Committee. Along with the Cranberry Fest that's going on this weekend, we're going to have-
Next weekend.
Next weekend, I'm sorry. We're going to have a bike ride. We'll be celebrating the 20th anniversary of the Old Colony Rail Trail. The bike ride will leave Brooks Park at 11:00 AM and travel to the Chatham Airport, and then back. It will be a family ride, and everybody's encouraged to ride with us. An anniversary commemorative water bottle will be given to all riders. We would like to thank Tim Millar for his leadership during the formative years of the Old Colony Bike Trail. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sounds like a wonderful event. Did you have something more, Ed? Did you want to follow up on that, Ed?
Well, yeah, I believe the ending point of the ride will be at the festival. And we'll have a bike corral for people to leave their bikes in, and that's where they'll, I believe, will hand out the commemorative water bottles.
Good evening.
Yes, the Harwich Cranberry Festival will be a happening event, September 15th and 16th. But before I get to that, I just want to appreciate the support of the selectmen, select board, what's the proper term nowadays? Are we a select board, or are we still?
Selectmen.
Selectmen. Okay. Because other towns have become select boards.
Women, they'd be called select women if they were.
Select persons? Select ones. Anyway, thanks for your support for the Cranjam, the Cranber, the Cranfest in the Courtyard Summer Concert Series, which I think went quite well. I want to thank Carolyn and Erica, staff at the Community Center and the Cultural Center for their support, and all the volunteers at the Harwich Cranberry Festival, and all the people in the community who came out to the concerts. And I look forward to our wrap-up, and perhaps we will have some more of those next summer. And in the meantime, we have our biggest event of the year coming up, the Harwich Cranberry Festival, 15th and 16th. Hope to see you all there. And there's information available in all kinds of places. At the Chamber of Commerce, I think there's stacks of, what do they call it? The Chronicle insert is the Fall for Harwich?
Right.
Fall into Harwich? So there's lots of information about all the fall activities, including the Cranberry Festival on the 15th and 16th, and Family Beach Day on Saturday, September 8th, 11 to 3:00. Are those the right hours?
11 to 3:00.
11 to 3:00. So we hope to see all of these events.
Thank you. Thank you both for all you do for the Cranberry Festival. It's a great event.
Yeah, I was just going to give a pitch for Family Beach Day. We'll be having it, although this year, we're not going to be having a bonfire. We sort of reassessed the liabilities inherent in that activities and decided to forego that. But one of the things with both the Beach Day and Festival, that it's getting harder and harder, we, anybody in the community who would like to help out, we could use volunteers, and we have, you can do everything to get getting sucked in on a year-round basis, like Bob and I do, or just show up on one of the days and give us two hours. You know, it's, there's a whole range of volunteer opportunities, but we could really use some additional volunteers to help make it run smoothly.
Thank you, Ed. Good evening, Melissa.
Melissa McGuire, I'm the Director of Student Services for Monomoy Regional School District, and a pleased member of the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition, which is why I'm here tonight, in support of a proclamation we submitted. September 9th through the 13th is Suicide Awareness Week, and so we are seeking support for a proclamation in that awareness. What I also want to share through Monomoy, what we're doing to support our students and families, is we have a really heavy emphasis on our social-emotional learning and behavioral health. Our students receive a curriculum called Second Step that addresses social-emotional learning, as well as the Botfin Life Skills, which is an anti-addiction curriculum, grades 3 through 12. We offer our, all of our staff, mental health first aid three times a year, as well as our parents and community, mental health first aid three times a year. We also offer our parents an anti-addiction seven-part series sessions throughout the year on anti-addiction as well. So we have a heavy focus on social-emotional learning for our Harwich and Chatham communities. So I thank you for your support on this proclamation, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Does any board member have a question?
Just think, the work you guys do is wonderful.
Thank you. Yeah, we do thank you for its very important work, especially in today's society, so thank you very much. Okay, and nobody else for public comments and announcement? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, Ed.
I'd like to present the consent agenda and move its approval, including approval of the minutes of June 4th, 2018 executive session, July 23rd, 2018 regular session, August 6th, 2018 regular meeting, and approve and sign the proclamation request from the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition.
Second.
Any other, any questions? Michael? Don, anything? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the public hearings and presentations. Financial transparency presentation from Carol Coppola. Good evening, Carol.
Good evening. As the Board is certainly aware, the Board has set goals for financial transparency. That is one of the goals that the Board had set previously. And so, I and with the assistance of the IT Director, Foster, we did a lot of demos this, over this year. We analyzed a lot of the products that are out there. So I'm certainly very familiar with these products. I'm going to try to go slow, but not too slow. So we're going to do a little show and tell here. I picked communities that are Massachusetts communities that are using these products. We're going to show you three. I was just going to do two, but I decided that, you know, I should probably show you the top three. So this is Province Town that you see here. When you go into Province Town's website, it links you to a page that looks like this. And so, they add this narrative to, to the information. And then, if you, it's very easy to access the information. All you have to do is click there. And we're going to show you some financial information for the town of Province Town. So, this, this brings you right to, here's, here's our actual expenses and our revenue over the history of however long they'd like to provide that information for you. Revenue was in the green bar, expenses are in the kind of orangey bar. You can see it in many different ways. Would you prefer to see it as a pie chart? You can do that. If you'd prefer to see it the way it was, we can go back here. Would you like to share this information? You can email it, you can tweet it, you can put it on Facebook, anything you'd like. All of them, all of these programs essentially work the same. You can dump it to a spreadsheet and analyze the information. Now, if you want to look at more of the details, you'll come down to the bottom of the page, and it's pretty easy to access the information. It shows you all the different types of revenue. We're looking at revenues right now, and this is just for the general fund. So we're just looking at general fund revenues that, for the, for history of, you know, since back to FY11. And if you'd like to look further into these, you can drop it down to get to like, what we call the line item level. And, and then, most of these programs allow you to get to the actual detail of the transactions. I haven't seen any that have allowed for that, so you could turn that on, turn it off. I haven't seen any communities recently that allow for like, kind of that level of John Smith got paid $200 on August 2nd, you know, that, that kind of information. So, you can look at many different types of, of reports that they have here, which links right into the financial system. So this is, so the town of Harwich uses Munis. Province Town also uses Munis. And so these are ERP systems, so these handle all of your payroll, accounts payable, your financial transactions. And so, these link right into the, the software. Some of it's a seamless link on some of these programs, and some of it's not. So if you wanted to say, I want to see what the cash, well, how much cash do we have in the bank? You can take a look at how much cash you have. You can look at it by pie chart. You can say, okay, I just want to know what the enterprise funds have for cash, and those are proprietary funds. And then you can see what the cash balances are there. So you can, this provides any member of your community the access to look at your financial information. This one you can, this program allows you to put kind of a story in that says, you know, this is explaining, this is the general fund, or this is the sewer enterprise fund, you know, and explain what that means. You can do that as well. So, this is a program that's called Open Gov. This program, the company signed on pretty early with the county, and they have a contract with the county. I'm going to go on to the next one, because you're going to see they're much the same. Oh, that's fine, this is fine. This is a program called Socrata. Socrata is owned by the parent company of Munis, which is your ERP system, which is Tyler Technologies. Tyler Technologies just purchased Socrata back in the spring. Town of Barnstable uses Socrata, they've used it for a number of years. So let's take a look at Socrata. So the town of Barnstable puts this narrative up here. So they're, you know, they spend the time, and they, and they actually document some information here. For this program, we're going to look at expenditures separate from budget, I mean, from revenue, sorry. So let's look at expenditures. So you can look at expenditures here. You can look at it in a bar chart. The lighter blue, or it's kind of gray, but it's really blue, the lighter blue is the, is the budget. The darker blue is what's been expended thus far, right? So this is, and so, it says, where's all the money going? And how is it funded? And it answers those questions for you. You can see this in a pie chart, you can see, if you'd like to see it, you know, you could see it in many different ways. You can share this information, put it up on Facebook, send it in an email, download the data, you can do all of that. So let's just take a look at the general fund here. So the general fund here is made up of numerous departments. We can either gain access to the financial information by, let's say, clicking on Administrative Services. And that tells us what departments, sorry, departments are under Administrative Services. And then if we want to get to the financial information, we just go down the page a little, and we say, we want to see the finance office. Where are they spending their money? Barnstable could put more information, narrative information here if they wanted to. And then, of course, we get down to, okay, I want to see, you know, what this department is spending money on. And it breaks, it continues to break it down. I'll show you. And this is Barnstable's data that's tied right into, they use Munis as well, so this is tied right into Munis, and it's kind of a seamless integration for, for, because they're, the companies are together now, I guess, married. And so then you can get down to the level of salaries and wages, what's, what's in this category. Salaries and wages are in this category, for full-time, for temporary, for overtime, longevity, you can see all the information. What you can't do on Barnstable is go any further than this. It's not going to tell you who got paid longevity. So they've decided that that type of detail is, they don't want to release, or, I don't mean it that way, but they don't want it on their website, I'll say it that way. Some information you wouldn't want on your website. Like you wouldn't want health insurance on your website, so. So, this is Socrata. You can, you can use this program to tell your story, to add narrative any way you'd like, along with the other one as well. I want to show you a third product that, I'm going to show you the town of Norwell that's using it. This product is called ClearGov. It actually, this company grabs all the demographic information for all the communities or municipalities in Massachusetts. So that's what they're going to show you first, is all the demographics. So they've got Harwich's here, they've got Harwich's data, they just don't have your financial data. So do you want to look at demographics? Is that something that you're interested in? Is that something you think the public would be interested in for Harwich? So, do you want to look at more demographics? Not just population or median home value? We can look at, where do you rank in the state of Massachusetts? What's your population by age? How many households? You know, there's an abundance of information that they're providing for you, on this, all this demographic. Is that important to you? I don't know. That's why I thought I should include this in the presentation. Once we decide that, okay, we're all done with looking at demographics, we want to look at, let's say we want to look at some financial information. So we're going to go back here, and we get down to the financial information here. So for Norwell, this is, we're looking, going to look at the general fund, which is your operating budget. And let's take a look at a breakdown. This is an option that you have, if you want to look at your, you know, compare it to your tax bill, you can say no. You just want to see the data. So here's the total budget for the town of Norwell, and here is how it's broken out. It's broken out by education, and so on and so forth, all of the different categories. They make it pretty easy, all of these programs make it pretty easy for you to access the data and drill down into the data, because you can, they've linked it. So you can just click on a piece of the pie, and it's going to break it down further. Now, it's also going to bring you down here, where you can look here and say, you know, what does this include? If I'm a, if I'm a person and, you know, I, let's say, a homeowner, and I say, I don't understand, what does group insurance include? And they're, they're providing you, the town of Norwell is providing you with this narrative. They benchmark each community, this company benchmarks each community against other, your peer communities in the state of Massachusetts. And you can get down here to, again, details, but you're never going, this program's not going to allow you also to see the transaction details. It's a button, it's a check you either turn on or turn off. So I'm sure I thoroughly confused you. You know, the problem is, is that I've seen them so many times, and I reviewed, I spent so many hours reviewing them. To me, it's just, you know, it's, it's pretty easy for me to navigate through all of them. But I'll tell you that, that with the firm that contracted with the county, so you've got to provide access to your data, and there's always a risk when you're going to let them pierce your network, right? So that's, that's one thing to, just to think about. Socrata is owned by Tyler Technologies, which owns Munis, so it's a seamless integration. This company, we would have to send them Excel files from Munis, and then they'd upload them into their program. So, so there's lots of advantages and disadvantages to, you know, many of them. Personally, I like Socrata, I think it's robust, I think it adds, you know, a lot of clear information to people that aren't, maybe aren't financial people. It shows the information in a different way, it's pretty easy to navigate. That's just my opinion. But, I'm happy to answer any questions, if I haven't put you to sleep yet.
Thank you, Carolyn. Larry, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Carol. You've done a lot of work on this. And I'm not sure I can ask the questions in a linear fashion, so I'll just, just start. When I looked at a couple, they contain details like monthly or weekly. I guess my question is, do they allow roll-ups, so I don't have to look at, I can look at a department, I don't have to look at the members of a department?
Do they allow roll-ups?
Roll-ups. In other words, some of, I forget now, one of them had listing of, like, our community development, they might have building information.
So you can get to-
I can roll up to a department from its members.
Yep, so you can, I say drill down to just a department, Department of Public Works, and have that in, you know, in total? But then you can drill down further and get to the line item, so it's your choice.
And I can do the same with time. I can go from looking at months to years. One of them showed monthly values versus-
You know, I don't believe that you can. I do not believe that you're able to compare January to January.
No, I'm looking at not, I'm looking at total years versus-
Total years.
Yeah.
You are able to do, to, to work on it fiscal years, that's correct. But I do not believe, I have not come across where you could compare a month to a quarter to a quarter.
I don't think month to month means anything, anyway, because you have nothing to look at, or a budget. Trend analysis, I forget, one of them I showed a trend analysis, and I didn't see that in all of them, just, Socrata's have trend analysis, so you have some idea of how I'm comparing this department, how it's comparing to previous years.
They all compare the previous years.
So they all have some type of trend analysis.
Yeah, they do.
Barnstable doesn't include, it's not, it's not fully loaded then, they don't include only the salaries, they don't include the benefits and so on.
Barnstable, I'm not sure I, I understand your question.
If we look at our, what we pay, we pay salaries, but we also pay benefits, we pay health.
Yep.
Is that what, if I look at salaries on this, is that including all the costs of employment?
It would only be, it would only include it if that's how they accounted for it in their financial accounting system, Munis. So if they account for health insurance and those other benefits, and grouped in an area such as the town of Harwich does, that's the way it's going to appear on.
Okay. And is that how we do it at Munis?
That is how we do it.
Okay, so we're covered there. And I guess I don't, just one other question. I keep beating this horse, and I know it's, well, I'm looking at a way to track interdepartmental transfer, like when the highway department helps rec department. Is there a way to track that with these programs, so, as a decision point?
Again, I, so I'll go back. So this is pulling the data directly from your financial accounting system. So if you're tracking it that way in your financial accounting system, then yes. If you are not, then no.
Okay.
It won't manipulate the data. It won't manipulate the data.
And there's no way to add data outside of Munis, saying Socrate? You can't input data that's not, directly into this program, it's not already in Munis, is what you're saying.
I think that if you start manipulating data, you run a risk of making many mistakes. And if it's, if it's in your financial accounting system that way and we end up changing how we record transactions and expenses, then, then that's, that's exactly what you're going to see.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Larry. Michael?
Thank you, Carol. So I think just to Larry's point, if you look at ClearGov and Socrata, or whatever it's called, those you're allowed to add commentary. So I'd imagine to Larry's point, we could add commentary, because we don't track indirect expenses. I think that's what your question was.
You can, you can add commentary to any of them.
So it looks like, if you read the asterisk, it says currently being developed or not included in base price for open, OpenGov?
That's correct.
Okay. So we'd have to get a price if we went with OpenGov, to be able to add commentary.
That's correct.
Okay. Ed?
Looking at these types of programs in the past, some of, some of the programs, you were able to get a, get a sense of how the expenses interacted with the tax rate that made up the property, property tax rate for taxpayers. So they could look at, go into, say, Public Works and look at snow removal and be able to determine what the deal, what the cost of snow, snow removal for their, for their property taxes. Are any of these, is that possible in any of these?
Well, it is on this one, and the town already has Visigo, which provides that information. So, and that's on the website. Visigo's on the website, and it does break it down in that manner. And so this one did too, and except for I said, no, I don't want to see it that way. So immediately, there was a box that came up, said, put your property tax information in. And I said, no, thanks.
Yeah, we, we did have Visigo, it's been in place for about two years. And I know some board members, as a, for instance, you take like Gulf, which basically is a self-sustaining operation, but it looks as if it's being supported by taxes instead of fees. So they did do some revisions to it to make it a little bit more upfront and apparent from that. But I know some board members in the past had some concern that it does present kind of a faulty picture or not a clear picture of what is fee-driven versus what's tax-driven. So I think Carol's done a good job of kind of looking and see what other products are out there.
Sure.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Getting back, actually, you made a comment earlier about, you know, getting buried in data. I'd like the idea that everybody's asking, can we use it for this management tool or that management tool? But the reality of things is, and I kind of innocently said that to one of the people in the non-resident taxpayers meeting, we're lying on a budget stake. Recognizing we don't pay everything out of our property taxes. There's actually millions between other sources that fund things. But getting down to the actual approval of the budget, irrespective of that fact, we present a budget to the town and they approve it or don't approve it. And I'd kind of like to make sure that at the end of the day, that we're looking at, that we're looking at this in the same way we would be looking at budgeting each, each year at the town meeting. I'd like to be able to drill down, because we're not schools. I mean, we, we don't get a bucket of money and say, okay, now that we've budgeted, we can transfer it around here and there. Money that's for salaries and police has to stay in police unless it's specifically moved to someplace else, because it's tethered to a line item. And that's how the budgets are approved. And the people who pay that are the people that go to town meeting. So during the year, I think it would be extremely helpful to actually have a run-up to the budget for the next year. Because it's somewhat frightening how quickly everybody, they're so overwhelmed by the magnitude of the numbers. The budgets go a heck of a lot faster than when you're asking for a hundred dollars to be transferred to the so-and-so office. People get, people can understand that, and they start arguing about those things. But when it gets to like tens of millions of dollars, they glaze over. It'd be real helpful if any system we put in, you could drill down as far as, okay, planning has, this is a line item for salaries and this for all other expenses. And it would allow people to be able to compare that to what's being proposed at town meeting instead of just going in and saying, I trust these people, they must be telling me the truth. So whichever one of these, it gets picked, it'd be nice if it could do some of the things Larry and Michael were talking about. But ultimately, the first and foremost tool should be for the citizens who fork over most of the money, so that they can, you know, be clear about where we intended it to go. Which, which reminds me, I don't think anybody asked, forgetting about comparison to last year in August compared to this year, can we track this relative to what was authorized and budgeted?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So if somebody drills down to line item seven seventy-two in such-and-such department, it could show what they've expended to date compared to what they were approved to be spending.
And in fact, you saw that in one of the products. If you'd like me to show you again, I would be happy to.
No, no, I just want to make sure that whatever selection we make has that before it gets into any of those bells and whistles. Because that's the most important thing, is this is so, we could show people, you gave us money and this is where it's going.
Chris?
Yeah, I just, I think any one of these products is a good product. It's a little bit, just really, what the board would like to see. The only thing I would like to just kind of put a plug in, you know, the last six months, we've really been focused on protecting the town's integrity of the computer system and so on. I, I do think that the Tyler Company, which is the parent to Munis, having them, you know, have direct access doesn't mean that they have to translate anything that, you know, another company may get.
Is that Berkshire Hathaway?
So, I think it is, actually. The question was Berkshire Hathaway, I think, believe. They're the parent now for Tyler, if I remember that right. Berkshire Hathaway is part of Ty, or Tyler's part of Berkshire Hathaway. But I, I think that having Munis and having that material, to have the data directly what we're using every day, have that on the site is going to be much more robust and much more of an opportunity for people to drill down versus any kind of having to translate the information. So I, I would just put a plug in for the Tyler product, which I think is actually Socrata, which is a little bit more expensive. But I thought if we have Munis already, that we may get a discount of the amount.
So when, I was at their, I mean, they had an annual conference that was up in Boston this year. And so I was at the conference, and what they had said to us was, anybody who owns their, what they had a product called Citizen Transparency. And this Socrata far surpasses that product, which is why they bought them. So they said, you know, if you own or in the process of owning Citizen Transparency, you get Socrata. Now, the only thing you're going to save is that first annual upfront fee of thirty-two hundred dollars. You're there, everyone that uses it still has to pay an annual fee. So they're really not really going to save anything. They did bring the price down, Socrata was, I think, twenty-seven thousand dollars. I think that was the first memo I sent back in beginning of August. And so the price has, Tyler has reduced the price. And then I think there might be a grant opportunity, so.
Larry?
You know, my, what I would suggest is we do, we go with the program Carol's, whatever she recommends. It just looks like they have pretty much all the same, same results. My question is, do we get any, can we tie into the county? We use the same program to get a group discount or the other towns?
Well, their program was, I think it was eleven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars or something like that. So it really-
Because they're using Socrata, right?
Open, OpenGov.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forget that question.
It's OpenGov. And then if you want to tell your narrative, okay.
I had a question in terms of, how important is it for it to integrate with the seller? Because here it does say OpenGov does with, you know, currently being developed. And I guess relating to some of your questions about, you know, what can you see in the building department, et cetera? I don't know, does that help with that?
Well, you know, I mean, it all depends on what you want. Clearly, if you're looking for demographic information, you may want to go with a different product. If you're looking to integrate to, to, you know, for your building department, that, that's, you know, that's, that may be another initiative that you have. It all depends on what the board is looking for. I, I took the direction of, you know, I took it kind of like straight off your goals and said, financial transparency, okay.
No, and that's good. And I guess my only other question was back to Chris's point about security. And, you know, in terms of how safe our information is. And, you know, I suppose with a company that's larger and probably has more beefed up security. And the other question I would have is, what, how, what type of notification do we get if there's any type of breach, you know, in any of these contracts? Is it immediate? You know, and how, how frequently is that security beefed up for, you know, for the town? I, I know, and I know that's a larger IT question, I guess. But, I mean, contractually, what are they obligated to do to notify us if, if there were a breach?
Well, I think if there, I'm, you may want to-
That may be a faster question.
I think that if there were a breach, it wouldn't be from the vendor that, and they wouldn't even know. Because they wouldn't be doing it probably, more than likely.
Correct.
Yeah. It would be from an outside party.
Yeah, okay. So there's really, there's nothing anybody can really do about that, I guess. And the only other, how frequently, is there any difference in the update of information on either any of these?
No, they can be updated weekly, they can be updated daily. It, you know, it's, however we set them up. Some, some set them up just to update annually. But some use it a lot more frequently.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Evan?
Just following up on, on something that Julie said. Of these three, the one that doesn't have to pierce our network from the outside, that, that's the one that would be marginally or somewhat safer, correct?
Well, and there's two. ClearGov, you would be sent, we would be emailing them Excel reports. I, I expect that at some point in time, they're going to integrate, right? But with, with Socrata, you know, it's owned by Tyler Technologies. So it's, you know, it's a sister to Munis.
Don?
Yeah, as we're debating this, I mean, while I'm concerned about computer security and frankly, if they can hack the Pentagon, they can hack Atlanta, then they can hack us. So it's not, I'm not self-satisfied that we've got some corner on the market of security. But we're, we're talking about derivative data here. I mean, it's, if they're going after something, it's much more likely you're going after employee records or social security numbers from the town clerk's office or something that would be functionally useful to them. Everybody, I mean, the whole point of this is, is it going to be transparent enough so that everybody gets to see what the so-and-so office is spending? And I don't get the impression that this is actually an operations module as much as it is an information module. So hacking this would be kind of pointless. They should, they should go after the main data stream where you're actually posting to payroll.
What, what would be pierced is the network?
Yeah.
So it's not just-
No matter who we go to, the network is the network. And it's, it's, security is contingent on its weakest link somewhere. That's always the case in any IT situation. So are adding this via one vendor versus the other? I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Foster. One vendor versus the other is going to be virtually inconsequential in terms of our overall integrity.
If, if we use Socrata, we don't have to add any additional access into our system. They're, they're already there and they're, I think they're all probably trusted companies. But we've worked with Tyler for a long time and haven't had any problems. And if we use them, we wouldn't have to add additional access into our system.
And, if you will, the only reason that I kind of mentioned Berkshire Hathaway was the one weak link in these people wasn't being hacked. It was the lack of support for the software. And it seems like Berkshire Hathaway had come in with a commitment to actually beef up that overall software support, which isn't a vulnerability problem. It's actually to their advantage in terms of how we can use the data. I'm just worried that when you have to convert it to Excel or anything else, that you're adding another step and that somehow something could get corrupted.
Larry?
I think that's-
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I think that's true. If we, if we work with Socrata, they know their database, basically. There's no conversions, we don't have to extract any data and send it to anyone else.
Okay.
Just as an aside here, Berkshire Hathaway has come up a couple of times. The company that bought Munis is, I believe, called Virture, Berkshire Venture Capital. Berkshire Hathaway is Warren Buffett's company, right? You know, everybody, everybody knows about them. But I believe the company that bought Tyler has got Berkshire in the name, but it's not Berkshire Hathaway, so.
Thank you. Larry, did you have another question?
Well, I guess that's our homework to find out.
Yeah.
My question is, I guess, following up one of Don's comments, Carol, Gordon Foster. If we, at what point do we enter the budget information? In other words, could the budget information be entered into this before town meeting to help people understand, you know, with all the pie, the diagrams we have?
The proposed budget.
Pardon?
The proposed budget information.
The proposed budget, yeah, because it's now voted on, obviously. But it'd be, it'd be nice too to explain what's going on at town meeting, if that were possible.
I, I hear you. The budget at that point in time, technically in Munis, has not been posted into what we call the general ledger. So until that posting occurs, and that doesn't occur until after the budget is voted, then they would not be able to see it.
Is there any way around that to make it, so you could see it?
I don't, I, I'm not aware of any way around that.
Because it'd be, it'd be nice too to explain our, what's going on.
I can tell you that the, the company that is, that is with the county, that Provincetown uses, they have, they're developing a budgeting module. So you could, you know, if you went down that route, I mean, that's not included with the package that I showed you. But, you know, they're, they're going to, I guess, use it simultaneously with the, with Munis, I think, I'm not sure. I don't know if they're going to replace Munis, you know, with the budgeting module in Munis with-
Sounds too complicated.
Okay.
Just my understanding of it was that they were going to input it into, what was it? OpenGov, and then OpenGov was going to input it into Munis versus, with the module versus inputting it into Munis and having it go to ClearGov. That was my understanding of what they did. In a separate, more expensive module, as Provincetown was looking at.
Okay. Does anyone else have any more questions? As we want to take some-
Well, my question is, what's next, Ed?
Yeah, well, I guess the, the course-
Just recommendation.
I mean, I think that, you know, I'll, I'll guess, I'll make the recommendation that the board, you know, approves Socrata, so that way it's transparent as it comes out of the Munis product into the, into the visual display product. I think just to have that continuity. Because I do think things could be lost in translation and keeping with the same company. They're fairly similar in terms of their presentation and style. But I just, in, in terms of that, the, the one thing when we had Visigo, we had to extract and Andy had to put into Excel spreadsheet and send off the information. And anytime you're duplicating information, you know, you run the risk of, of, you know, having more errors. So I think maintaining that continuity, which is kind of, I guess, my point as well earlier on, that, that really to me would be key to accuracy.
Okay.
I'm moved.
So Ed just moved that, we go with Socrata.
Socrata.
Second.
Don seconded. Oh, sorry, Michael.
Should we get out of public hearing, go into open session?
So that wasn't technically a public hearing?
It was actually a public presentation.
A presentation, right.
And then where's the money coming from?
That was going to be my discussion.
So I know that the compact has opportunities for grants that the town is planning to capitalize on and make application. So I was not really part of that, other than providing the information to the administration.
So, I mean, we're making a motion in a second to approve something that's going to cost money and we have no budget, nothing in the budget. So shouldn't we get some, find the money first and then maybe vote on this?
I would be happy to, you know, we could wait- I would be happy to, you know, we could wait on this too, um, and, and bring it to town meeting if that's what your preference is.
I was gonna say, just, you know, there's two options here. One, we could start it in FY twenty, so as we develop this year's budget cycle and build it into the budget. It was not built into the budget for FY nineteen. When the board wanted to have Visigov done, Visigov was about three grand, it was substantially less. I was asked to go and identify a potential funding source. So certainly we could try to identify a funding source. We do have a, a, a grant that we're working on for government transparency. If we were to secure that grant, we could use that money to fund it. But I have no problem if the board wants to go for FY twenty, that would give us some time to develop it and put it into the budget. And then if the board wants me to, to see if I can identify a funding source or apply for a grant to, to fund it separately, and then we can go earlier, then I could just report back on that, this is well under the number.
Ed?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna withdraw my second then.
I'll further amend it to my motion. That, uh, that we approve mov- move, moving to use the Socrata, um, product and that it be implemented, uh, absent, uh, receiving any, uh, grant funding to implement earlier. But it be. Looked at.
Placed in the twenty twenty.
Twenty, twenty budget.
That'll be placed in the twenty twenty budget?
Yeah.
For, for town meeting?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor, oh, sorry.
Sorry, just to clarify, um, so nothing's happening this year.
Right.
Unless we get a grant.
We'll build it into the twenty budget. If we are successful in getting a grant, then I'll come back and let you know, we'll try to implement it earlier.
And then it will still go through the budgeting process for twenty.
It will have to because it's an annual cost anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, so no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, and then we're going to take things out of order and go to old business because that is with Carol as well for the fraud assessment policy vote to approve. So do you want to just give a quick overview? Or it's really a reconfirmation of what we believe we already voted to approve?
Yeah, I think maybe, um, it, it was at least recollection of administration and certainly we make mistakes, but that the entire policy was voted, but the section that we haven't highlighted was whether if there was any alleged fraud by the administration or by the finance director, that that would be reported to, both to the state or, and/or the town attorney. And, you know, I thought that the way the board was headed was to just remove the town attorney and report to the, to the state fraud bureau. But I wasn't, I guess when we did the minutes, we weren't clear that the board, so I'm looking for a confirmation vote of that.
Okay, Don?
Yeah, actually, we did not approve the whole policy. We had said that, that, I had said that particularly given, uh, some of the actions of town council recently, that I, I had no confidence whatsoever in him being a fair arbiter. And I'd like, I wanted to wait for the chair to come back to actually have a discussion to, to agree to the policy, which I'm prepared to make a motion over, but we did not approve the whole policy absent that one clause.
Okay, so, Michael.
But we did vote the policy absent the reporting source, correct, Don?
Yeah, but I would want to make a motion so that we can actually approve the whole policy with it.
Okay, so, and one other part of this, I just want to mention to all members is that we, we also received a survey from Carol and if everybody could make sure they complete that, that assists her in moving on with the next piece. And, uh, you know, I know I had a couple of questions, but Carol had offered graciously to assist me. So if everybody could make sure we complete that.
I reminded you to send me, send it to me again.
Uh, sorry, Don.
So, Madam Chair, I move that we strike in its entirety, the yellow highlighted section in page forty-one. And in its place, uh, put, "For allegations pertaining to the town administrator or the finance director, calls should be directed to the Office of Inspector General, Confidential Fraud, Waste and Abuse, 24-hour hotline, 1-800-322-1323."
Okay.
And approve the policy as presented.
Yeah, and approve the, your policy in its entirely, entirety with that change.
Can I have your language, just so she can record it for the, just so she can record it for the minutes?
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, so it's seconded, moved.
Approve the policy in its entirety after striking this paragraph in its entirety and replacing it with that text.
Okay. Did you second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, back to new business, oh, sorry.
Carol? Carol, if you could also send whatever questionnaire, you know, um, I don't remember receiving it anymore.
Okay, thank you.
I made the request this afternoon.
So, new business, approve the request for two-day beer and wine license by Harwich Cranberry Festival Incorporated?
Madam Chair, I'm trying to recuse myself because I'm involved in.
Sorry, Don, go ahead.
No, you had to recuse yourself first. Madam Chair, I move to approve the request for two-day beer and wine license by the Harwich Cranberry Festival Incorporated, commencing Sep- September fifteenth, noon to eight PM, September sixteenth, noon to three thirty PM, behind the community center at one hundred Oak Street, in the fenced-in music and picnic area as furthered outlined in the festival's August twenty-eighth, uh, written request, and further move to waive the license fee.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Request for reduced rate for library use at the cultural center. Chris, do you wanna talk about that?
Actually, I will defer to Carol, Carolyn, remember?
Thank you. So I, along with Erica, have been trying to fill the building. Keeping in mind what a former select person was interested in doing more educational programs. So this group actually came to us. I think I included in your packet, um, they are looking to do free labyrinth classes inside the library. It's a mat that rolls out, uh-huh, it's safe. They do it in other places and they would charge, they don't charge the community. And they are looking to work with the schools to have the kids come over to have this part of, um, the wellness approach that the schools are taking this year. They're happy to pay, uh, minimal fee, but the fee that we had in place was a little too high for them. They are a nonprofit, I did provide all that for you. So we were looking to have that fee reduced to four hundred dollars for the few times they asked to use it.
Thank you, Carolyn.
My pleasure.
Don, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Ed?
No.
Michael?
In reading through this packet, Carolyn, I think that they, it almost says, appears that I have a different piece of paper. The first one I read said four hundred dollars.
Yes.
And this one says waive all fees.
The four hundred dollar fee is the correct one, I'm sorry if you have a different.
Okay, so they wanna pay four hundred dollars for fourteen uses, if I'm reading it correctly?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Larry? Did, sorry, did you have another?
No, I guess the only other question Carol, Carolyn would be, are we giving anything up?
Uh, we're not, there's no one currently scheduled in there. And they did say to us that they could be flexible if we needed that for something, so.
That's it.
Larry?
Uh, no.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the request for reduced rate for library use at Cultural Center by.
For library.
To a flat rate of four hundred dollars?
To a flat rate of four hundred dollars for the fourteen uses.
Second.
All right, who's seconded, Ed seconded? Okay, so moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And under new business, treasurer, tax collector position, recommendation for regrade.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, just to provide a little bit of an overview. Administration, we, we had negotiated and the board had approved, kind of looking at each of the SEIU, the, the management union positions. We have completed that work. And in the last probably six months, uh, we've had a, a couple of staff, well, three staff in particular, who have been specifically approached by other towns to apply to vacant positions. We are kind of in a, a new time here in which a, a rating of positions is more commonplace than, than I would like.
Called poaching.
Poaching. And if you want, if we wanna call this kind of a anti-poaching effort, that, uh, in this case, I did have, sometimes an employee will come to me and say that they've already accepted a position, so there's no opportunity for counter. Uh, and sometimes you'll have an employee that will come to me and say, I'm giving some consideration to going to another town and here's the offer I have from them. In this specific instance, Amy Bullock, our town treasurer, longtime town treasurer, longtime town employee, came to me and said that there was an opportunity, that she was recruited to go over to a, a neighboring town. And I said, well, did you offer? She said, no. I said, well, what I would like to do, Amy, is have an anti-poaching approach to some of this to try to keep valued employees. So I had said to Amy at the time, and Carol came in and, and joined me for the, for the session, that I would do two things. One, as the administrator and really as her department head for Carol, she can recommend a two-step jump. So as, as an administrative capability, I have that ability to do. So I said I would do that. And then secondly, I said that I would look at the position and see if a regrade was in order. When we went back to look, I think with Bob Lawton, uh, taking a little different approach with these desk audits and, and so on, we wanted to look at things a little bit differently. So we went back, reexamined Carol and Amy, uh, the work that she does, and we wanted to see if she was, if that position was still right within the organization. Uh, I think administration, we came to the determination that, uh, the position probably did warrant an increase to match up to the assessor. Under the structure that we have, the finance director has two direct reports to her. One is the, uh, director of assessing and the other is the, the treasurer collector. And right now, the assessing position is higher than the treasurer collector. And I think in our estimation, uh, that probably should be more equal. So what I had committed to Amy was that I would, uh, look at this, if it was warranted, bring it to the selectment. Obviously, any regrade is a change to the classification plan, has to be approved by the board of selectment. So the request before you this evening is to reallocate or reclassify the position from an M, M four, step nine, to an M five, step seven. And what this will do is over the three-year time horizon of the SEIU contract, bring, uh, this position, uh, I wanna be careful how I say this, more competitive with the town that, that came rating. Or poaching, I like that word better, I think, Ed. And we, we didn't match dollar for dollar, but the employee likes working here and didn't necessarily want to have a offer that was higher than the, than the town that came a calling. But to at least be treated in a more equitable manner. So this is certainly a change in, in terms of how we've looked at things. And I think really based upon the reality of people coming in, the opportunity to, to look at it, the opportunity to basically counter, uh, made some sense. And what we had left it with the, the SEIU union was once we completed the review of the eighteen, that we would consider things on a case-by-case basis moving forward. So this is one of those cases that we are recommending.
Thank you, Chris. Questions, Don?
It's not so much a question, I mean, and I'm not gonna plant my flag on this particular recommendation, but, um, I've made comments in the past about this being a loop. As much as I dislike towns poaching from each other, uh, and we've lost quite a bit of talent. We just lost the COA director, we lost our town planner. There's several thoughts here, because we keep comparing ourselves to other people who no doubt themselves have meetings and compare themselves to us, and then it keeps going around in a circle. And we had this discussion in the office at one point. My only concern, well, big concern here, it's not the only one, uh, is that when you're looking at these salaries, first of all, nobody gets rich working for a town government. I, I was a federal program manager and town governments are always at the low end of the pay scale they've always been. Not that I'm saying that's a good thing, but that's what it is. In terms of where we live, as a competitive area, it would be hard to find a, an eighty to one hundred thousand dollar job on Cape Cod if it weren't at the hospital or the school system. I mean, white collar jobs of that sort don't really exist here. I found that out pretty fast, thirty years ago. But if we kept, if we keep finding ourselves on that kind of tread wheel, we're gonna be having problems perpetually. We need some sort of a strategy here, because I don't wanna lose well-trained, good, intelligent staff. But by the same token, this, this is a book whose chapter I keep reading over and over and over and over again. It keeps getting back to, well, you know, Yarmouth pays this and Chatham pays that. I don't even know how Chatham gets to the point where they pay some of their employees what they do on a pro cap basis, because it's a much smaller town. But nonetheless, we find ourselves in a grid with these people, always. I mean, this has been going on for years and years. It's like, well, you know, we're gonna lose so-and-so because Dennis pays this much. Or it doesn't reflect what the circumstances are that might cause somebody to wanna go, because there's a happiness factor, plus there's a, what happened to the last employee that you want me factor, uh, that you have to consider. So, uh, again, I'm not sure that I wanna make an issue of this, but we have no real durable strategy overall about how we're gonna approach this. And we found ourselves comparing, like with the community center, uh, off Cape, which is a straw man argument, because it's, it's not relevant. Cost of living there is different, uh, and a lot of other factors are different. I mean, people move here specifically saying they're willing to take less to be on Cape Cod. And if we start finding ourselves i- in a footrace to see who can pay more per position, it's, it's a road that leads to hell, basically. I mean, there's no way to actually contain expenses, I mean, because we're constantly up, you know, changing the grading. I do go along with the idea that you sat and made a desk order, cause I was the one that actually initiated that process in the first place, saying, does this job description really meet what's actually going on at the desk? So that, that weighs heavily on how I feel about this particular instance. But universally, we're gonna be doing this every month, uh, for positions unless we come up with a strategy about how we wanna approach it.
Just, uh, credit where credits do, that was Carol that said, that Amy, you did the desk on it, I thought it came out.
No, I, and, and again, I agree, because you build these things. It's based on what people actually do. If things change and they're doing much more than what they were originally compensated to do, that's a meaningful measure for why you would wanna change how they get compensated. But beyond that, like I said, the, the overall problem is, is that it's a merry-go-round we're on. And we're gonna have this discussion again, we're gonna have it in another department, because we are.
Chris?
Yeah, I don't necessarily disagree that it's gonna be a case-by-case basis. I, I think that there's a couple of things in some of the conversations, I do exit, you know, interviews with people that, that come and go. You know, one of the things that, you know, I do worry about is, in this case, the, the two positions, it was a twelve thousand dollar difference. And for less work, twelve thousand dollars, and in the municipal marketplace, which is the marketplace that, where we, we operate in, you know, it is, uh, when people get close to retirement, it's that high three that really counts. So a ten thousand dollar difference for three years equates out to eight thousand dollars per year in retirement, which is, which is significant. I think trying to maintain a, a level of competitiveness is important. And I think we are getting a, uh, it is, Harwich is a good place to work. And, you know, every, every interview that I've done with folks, I get a good indication that this is a good organization to work for. So one of the things is obviously employee satisfaction, those are the types of things that we are trying to drive and strive for to maintain. But I do worry a lot that when you have a town like Brewster that had a retirement in their, I think it was their finance director, and have really, really been struggling to find anybody with that skill set to come in. The town has been very fortunate, in my opinion, very fortunate. We've had three finance directors in the time that I've been here to find quality people and be able to attract and retain quality people. And I think that really doing this just shows that we do care and, and want to retain the quality that we have the opportunity to retain.
Don?
Yeah, well, you know, I think following up on comments that Don made, you know, but it's, it's unfortunate that we get into sort of the circular bidding situations. But really, in any, whether public or private, in, in any job category where there's a scarcity of qualified people, that happens. I know working for, being on the board of, of one of the agencies I'm on, takes some fairly specialized people, and there aren't a whole lot of them. It, it takes, it's, it's a challenge to keep salaries at a rate, to keep your people with you. And, you know, a town treasurer is one of those positions that is, has become more and more specialized over time. It used to be, you know, something needed with lined paper and a pencil. And those days are long gone.
Michael?
So I guess the first question is to Chris before I prolong this conversation. Is this done already?
No.
So there's been no raise given?
The only thing that's been done is the two steps.
So you did the two-step increase. And what did, what did that raise the pay?
I think it was about four thousand dollars.
And you're trying to get to twelve thousand?
Actually, about ten, a little bit less. And over the three years, we'll, we'll be in that range.
Okay. So Evan, your memo that you put together for the board of selectmen, it says as requested. Can you just tell me who requested that? And when?
Well, I requested that the work be done, the study be done.
When?
Probably right after Amy came in and indicated that she had received an offer from another town.
A rough timeline, Chris?
Three weeks ago.
When was the desk audit done?
Pretty quickly after that.
Looks like on the twenty seventh?
August twenty seventh? And, and when did Amy start this position? She started with the duties that she's doing now, I guess is my point.
Yeah, she moved up to treasurer. I've been here four and a half years, so I'm about a year into my, so about three years.
Okay. So we just got done with June fourth executive session, and we approved the minutes tonight, so I could talk about it. SEIU president, John Rendon, you wrote him a letter, Chris, saying that you met with every department head and analyzed everything, and we were given four positions to increase as part of the SEIU. So how from June fourth, a recommendation not to increase this salary, go to back before us now to increase, other than the head hunting?
Yeah, it, that's not necessarily the way it unfolded in the agreement with SEIU, which was negotiated three-plus years ago. We said we would look at eighteen positions, oh, like six per year for over three-year period. This was one of the positions that we looked at fairly early on.
Okay.
So this position hadn't been looked at in about two years.
Okay. And then as far as the job offer goes, Chris, I guess, you know, how does the board see what the job offer is? Was it in writing? Because this is a slippery slope to me. Any employee in town at this point can go. And anyone that has been reclassified and not given money, and I can name a few if you'd like, now has the opportunity to go put themselves out there and get a job offer, and you've got to look at every one of them. Now, the town of Dennis, which our, our, our tax collector, Amy, was working for part-time over the last few months, I believe.
Uh, just for a short period of time to help them out during.
But multiple times?
I don't know multiple times, li- limited times.
Multiple times. I'll just say multiple times, because I know how many times. But the, the, got a job offer from a place that she was working at, came back to you. Now, you're saying it's a twelve thousand dollar difference, but their health insurance is a sixty forty, ours is seventy-five twenty-five.
That's correct.
We have longevity. We have a thirty-five hour work week, they have a forty-hour work week. And I actually went and read their job description, and then your new job description. How much of that homework did you guys do before you matched that offer?
I did every piece of that except for matching up their job description to our job.
Well, just a few minutes ago, Chris said that they have more duties in Dennis for this position, and that is not true.
They have less duties in Dennis than what we asked our treasurer-collector to do.
And that's not true. So I said it backwards. It is not true that they have less duties in Dennis than we have. So I want to know, I guess as far as a policy goes and an administration, because this certainly is your call. I want to know what you guys do if you didn't read their job description.
Well, two, two things to that point. I, I did ask for verification that she did get an offer, so I, I do have that. So it is a valid offer that she had. She had whatever, twenty-four hours to make a decision whether she was going to accept it or not. And, you know, she knows the job skills that she has here, and she knows what she was being asked to do there. And it was based upon really a discussion with her that she said that what was being asked of her there, I believe she had additional staff and less work that was being asked of her. So I didn't go and independently authenticate that. I took the person at the word that it was more staff available and the less work.
Well, I would ask that you, I would ask that the chair review what you have for documents. And I would ask that you, as administration, review what the job is and make sure you're comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges, because again, this is a slippery slope to me. And we have lost, this would be one that we have saved, if they were actually going to make the move. And we've lost how many department heads that we haven't given the opportunity to give more money to. And, 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 you know, one, one very recently that we probably shouldn't have lost. So I'd like to see at management, administration, and how they're going to handle this.
Larry?
Thank you. I'm a little worried by the discussions that Don and Mike, Michael have on this. Let me just ask a general question. We've, you know, we've, we've signed contracts giving a two percent increase. It's been, that's public knowledge out there. How much is, how much has this increased our salary budget? The upgrades we've been doing. This is one of several.
You mean this specifically?
Not this specifically. This plus the other regrades we've made. We've made now, what, eight regrades?
Well, for this year, I think I budgeted ten thousand dollars for the reclassification for this year, FY eighteen. About four thousand dollars went in, and there's about six thousand dollars remaining.
And so this is covered under our budget?
I would use that six thousand, because that's what it was intended for, regrade towards that end, to adjust.
So this is covered in our budget line item then?
The majority of it would be, yes.
The majority of it all is.
I don't know precisely if all of it would be covered.
Because we keep talking about, you know, how we paying for this, and I want to be sure we have it.
We have six thousand dollars in administration.
Maybe you could recheck that and be sure we're, we're covered.
We can look at that piece.
Now, do you see, uh, are there others coming down the pike we don't know about when you look at these? Because this seems to be now a, almost a snowball.
Well, I, you know.
Coming down that people look at and say, well, I need to get more.
You know, with, with the newspapers and such, and, and we live in a transparent world. And, you know, I've said this before, if, if we get the reputation of being a training ground for others, more people will come and, and raid from us. Quite, quite honestly, I think it's a compliment to us that we're bringing in good quality people. So I think it is a good compliment.
I don't disagree with that.
But I think that we're just trying to get to a.
There's a balancing to be made on.
I think overall, I, I think overall, we're, we're competitive with, with people. I, I think quite honestly, and, you know, I've said this since I've been here, that the, the salary structure that the town of Harwich has, that because longevity is a great equalizer, but it takes ten years to get to that equalizer, that some people can't afford to wait that long. And we, we tend to make up the salary in the long run, and we're at a little bit of a competitive disadvantage in the short run.
That'd be interesting analysis, how many people are in that longevity, because we have a lot of people that I think have been here a long time. They're probably in that, have been covered by that longevity.
It, it's actually, um.
This is in the contract. Let me ask a question while Evan's looking at that. Following Michael's question, I'm just, when you look at the chart you gave us on the treasurer, the M four, going to, M four nine going to M five six.
Is that the FY nineteen?
M five seven, I'm sorry.
Seven.
Is that the FY nineteen longevity?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out, you have eighty-four, basically eighty-five going to eighty-eight is.
Three thousand.
How's that match up with what we talked about, the four thousand and eight thousand?
In the, in the, well, if it's three thousand dollars, which appears that it's three thousand dollars, I have six thousand dollars in the administration budget to cover adjustments. Amy has been willing to look at over the next three years. In the SEIU contract, we made some adjustments. We eliminated the bottom two steps and we added some steps. So over the next three years, she will be competitive, more competitive with Dennis. So for this short term, it would be three thousand dollars that would be needed to make the initial adjustment.
And so your requests do that, and then there's a request next year, so.
Two-year budget.
Maybe just for me, if you could clarify what our, what our commitment is. You're only showing the one year then, right? The first year.
Yeah, everyone's in the same.
I'm just trying to follow this tape.
Everyone's in the same boat for the schedule, the SEIU schedule that we did.
Let me see if it's, um, I, I think if you go to the next slide there, I, I believe you can look at what, M five, step seven continues on to.
Yeah, that's right. M five, step seven starts at eighty-eight, oh, three, three.
I did my best to predict as many of the questions.
Okay, so you're trying to make up in three years what, that's the way that the proposal is then?
And we're not going to, we're not going to make up the hundred percent. We're, we're going to be about eighty percent there, and that was.
The offer today is ninety-two.
Yeah.
And she's going to eighty-eight.
So, Michael, you have another question?
Yeah, just to clarify. So if we've already given four thousand, Chris, and you got three thousand here, and you say you have six thousand, you'll find the other thousand?
You did that a little too quick.
So if you have, if you, you've already given her four thousand. You gave two-step increases.
And then this would be the additional.
This would be another three thousand.
Three thousand. Seven thousand, we have six.
And you had six. So where, where's the other, you'll find the other thousand?
We, we probably do have in administration the ability to transfer that balance of additional thousand over.
Okay. And then did you, did either Evan or Chris, did you, did you figure out the difference in longevity and the difference in the health insurance and the additional five-hour work week? Was that factored into your numbers? And if so, can you share it with the chair?
I mean, I, I did that, I did that study. We, we did look at that. We, we did find that we were a little, we were still low unless we were waiting to, I mean, that, that longevity is, is really the great equalizer. However, this was a, I mean, that's a, a long time to get to that.
I don't think you answered, Mike.
We, we can get that material.
We can get that material.
Okay. So the rest of the question, Evan, just so you're clear, is there's a difference in medical insurance by about fifteen percent, sixty forty versus seventy-five twenty-five longevity, as well as a five-hour work week, five extra hours a week. And I'd like to see through the chair that math, and that you guys did that, and when.
Right. And the methodology we did for SEIU had all those factors in that, so we'll, we'll duplicate that for.
Want to see from Dennis to Harwich, that's all I want to see.
Just Dennis to Harwich.
And I, I think that's important in, in, to make everybody comfortable in what we're comparing. At the same token, we also know that she's not, if she doesn't go to Dennis, she's losing that money too. So, I mean, ultimately, it's money that she would have gained over there, to your point, with some differentiations, but she's not even getting the full here. So there's that loss right there. The other, the other question too is, to your question, Larry, and I think it's a good one. And, you know, it is a slippery slope. I don't think any one of us disagrees with that. We have a budget, and, you know, we try to schedule these reviews, as Chris has done over the course of, you know, the last few years. But I don't, I also don't think, and I don't know specifically, but I don't think with some of our other people that we've lost, that have been talented individuals, and poaching is a good word. You know, I don't think we necessarily got the opportunity to have that discussion. So that's unfortunate. Because, you know, in the same token that we lost those individuals and we have to hire new ones, we then have to pump more money into training, you know? I mean, they come trained to a certain extent, but to work for the, our town, they've got to have our training. So ultimately, we, again, it's never easy to think that we have to go back and increase and, you know, again, I, I agree. I mean, we, I think we pay well, you know? But ultimately, I think we have to weigh all the factors. And I think Michael's point about trying to compare apples to apples is a good one. I think that, you know, the analysis you've done in trying to take into consideration various things, where she's not, if she doesn't go, she's not getting the full amount. She could get over there, which could make up for those things. But it would be good to be able to share with the board, across the board. So, Don?
Yeah, just to sum up what I was saying, because I don't want it to be all negative, but I agree with Michael about comparing everything accurately. I'm happy that we did the desk audit. And even as I'm saying that this is kind of a treadmill, the only, the only thing that I will offer up here is, if we don't do some, that's why I was talking about a strategy. If we don't do something, I don't want to hear anybody say, how come you let her go? Or how come you let him go? Because the pendulum swings in two directions. And as much as I am not happy about being involved in a poaching game, what is it we want to do? I mean, if, if we don't want to match anything, then that's fine. Just say it, we'll move on. But then the next time we lose somebody, I don't want anybody to say at this board level, well, why'd you let him go? Because then we're, we're relenting on the thing. If, on the other hand, we're in a situation where you just match everything, I don't think we can sustain that. So I would love to hear something beyond this, so that we're not talking about a person in a job, which is always uncomfortable. About what it is we're trying to achieve. I mean, are we, and how it is, how is it that we're going to achieve it? Because I think it's a reasonable thought, what Michael's saying is, tear it down so it actually matches up. If it's got more hours, then prorate it. If the payroll, if the, uh, medical insurance is less, then crank that in too. But I mean, we need to have some sort of methodology agreed upon so that when we have this discussion, we're not having the basic discussion of, do we want to offer anybody anything? Or are we going to give everybody everything?
Right. But I also think we need to be realistic in terms of, again, there's some things that we can't measure if she has more staff and less work. You know, that, that's something, I don't know how we put a dollar figure to that, but, I mean, a- again, it's another valid point in the analysis.
We are not going to be in a position where we're going to be able to capture a hundred percent of the circumstance. Like, I mean,
No, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Our fire department does not get paid the highest department in the, on the Cape. We have a fairly high retention rate, and they're very highly motivated, and they're really good people, just on average. On the, and on the flip side of that is, I know some of the backstory about Dennis, and they're, they didn't just have an opening because somebody retired. It, it was something of a story that was similar to Brewster, not in the same magnitude. But how, how much of a satisfaction level you're going to get coming into cleaning up somebody else's mess is, is also a factor that we can never account for.
Right.
We are not going to be able to do that.
Right. And that's, I guess, my point, is that.
But I would like us to nail down what our strategy is moving forward, not necessarily tonight, but how are we going to approach this? Because we can't complain that we're matching somebody and then complain that we didn't match somebody else. We need to have some consistent something.
Carol?
Thank you. Based on the analysis that I've completed over the past little over a year, and the job duties that, and the responsibilities that fall statutorily under the treasurer-collector in any municipality, they're so significant that the regressing, the current grading of that position at an M four, in my opinion, is not accurate. And I think that it's, you know, I, I understand that you're talking about, you know, poaching and money, and, and I get it all comes down to dollars and cents. But for us, and, and kind of in our profession, it comes down to what's the level of responsibility? So whether you approve this or not, we're going to, I'm going to continue to ask the administrator to bring this regrading back to you, because it's accurate and it's appropriate. And I, and I just don't want to lose sight of that.
Thank you. Michael?
If I may. Carol, for me, it's more about planning and not reacting. And it's more about, you know, I wish I had what you just said in a memo. So I don't understand why we didn't have that in a memo from administration, or from you, stating what. from administration, or from you, stating what your opinion is. Unfortunately, the way this was brought forward was after a reaction to a job description, and in my opinion, um, I read both job descriptions, the new one that we wrote and the other one. And, and knowing a little bit about the history of what's going on over there, we're not comparing apples to apples. And we do have a great town, and we are paying a lot of money in this town. And for Don's comments earlier about eighty to a hundred thousand being a low pay scale, poll the people that live in this town and ask how many make eighty to a hundred thousand that are in the private sector. Poll them, they're paying for this, and we owe them doing our due diligence, which I don't believe town administration did on this one. So I'd like to see the documents, and at least know that we're planning, and going forward that we're planning, not just reacting.
Okay, so do we want to take an action, or how are we gonna address this tonight?
Well, just come back with the documents, and we'll take it up next time.
Okay, is that?
Specifically what documents?
The documents Michael's requested.
If you've been listening, I, I asked for three or four different times. I think Chris is clear what I'm asking for, and I'm pretty sure Evan is as well.
Hey, we'll, we'll put it, we'll put it together, I don't necessarily disagree, you know, I mean, quite one.
How quickly can I come back?
Uh, we, because Monday's a meeting, we've already missed, we've already missed the agenda for Monday, so.
Right, it can't come back till the seventeenth.
The seventeenth is the earliest. So, you know, we, we can do the analysis and bring it back, and Carol can write up and say what she said and put that documented, I think she's comfortable doing that, and obviously, she's comfortable saying it.
I don't think Michael was saying, no way, he, he was saying he wanted to be able to s- support that with some documentation, so I don't think the takeaway from the meeting should be, it's hopeless.
I absolutely.
The takeaway from the meeting should be, we need some, we need the information, and we're gonna continue to want to do it in that manner.
I think our consensus is we, we need to move ahead with it, we just want to be sure ducks in a row.
Well, so then, I guess the other question I have is, you know, there's already been a discussion in terms of saying, you know, we're at this point, the board needs to, you know, look at this and approve it, and so I, we either, you know, table it till the seventeenth, have those documents and make the decision that evening. I mean, I guess my only question is, you know, what, are we chancing anything? And, and I hope we're not. So I look to you, Chris, on that.
You know, people watch, so, you know, I mean, this is, uh, government by making sausage. So, you know, people see, how people react to it i- is, is really individual. I wish I could come up with a, a magic policy for how to address this. In my experience, you know, I, I remember when I started, when I started, the town had four years of zero and had really lost itself in the marketplace, and we've moved ourselves, so now we're competitive in the marketplace. And, you know, I, I just, I, I think the anti-poaching is more, i- it's a message to the employees that we will go back, and even though we did the analysis two years ago, and the situation two years ago was different, we will look on a case-by-case basis, because we want to retain quality employees. So, I mean, personally, I, I would rather have a vote tonight that this is necessary and put into place, and, and give, uh, not just the employee, but the organization, um, the, the message that we will look, and to discourage other towns from coming in and just taking our employees, if anything. If an employee knows, oh, I'm gonna get considered to be reviewed again if, if I'm that much out of whack, giving that message to the employees, I think is a pretty powerful message to deliver, if I may.
Michael?
Setting the sausage comment aside, you know, we just heard a very, very strong argument from our finance director, that had I heard that argument two weeks ago, three weeks ago, three months ago, when this came forward, I wouldn't be having this conversation. And I, and I'm, I'm a little taken aback by Chris's comment that he'd like a vote tonight. You know, I think if they had done their job, and we could compare apples to apples, and not just brought something forward incomplete again, that we could make a decision, we could make a vote. Put me on the spot tonight, I'm voting no. And it has nothing to do with Amy and whether or not she deserves the money, and whether or not she is owed the money. It has to do with getting stuff before it's complete.
Evan?
Uh, number three reads further, "The finance director believes the director of assessing position at the M five pay grade to be equally valuable to the town as the treasurer-collector position, and approves of the proposed reclassification for the position."
Thank you for that.
I, I, I did try and put that into the memo, um, a- and the reason why we do not have the financial portion of this, uh, as a way of regrading this position, is because it was decided that we were going to go with an internal equity, uh, and that was what the board, uh, had approved of in the past. So it's not from a lack of having done the work, I have that, um, simply a, a different strategy that was taken.
Thank you, Evan.
Madam Chair.
Michael?
Quick response. Evan, thank you for that. There's no breakdown of medical, the medical, there's no anything. And based on your timeline, and you're doing the memo from Chris after I asked the chair for it, so this started with me to the chair, and the chair bringing it up to Chris, and Chris asking you to do it, because I asked the question, otherwise, the raise was already done. The raise was given three weeks ago when the offer came through, wasn't it, Chris?
Not even close.
I, I don't believe that's accurate.
I'd like to see.
It was, it was initiated right after the employee came in.
And you said earlier, Chris, three weeks, it's, you said earlier, it's about three weeks ago, didn't you?
Things take down to achieve.
Right?
But I believe that he indicated, and it, and it was said, that Amy understood that any, any regrading, reclassification had to come to the board.
Had to come before the board's selectment.
Right, that, that she was aware of that.
She was aware of that from day one.
Nothing was a definitive till it came to the board. So. All right, well, there's no motion on the table, so I guess we are going to have to revisit on, uh, nine seventeen.
Bring it back on the seventeen.
Okay, uh, on to, uh, the contracts. Fire Station Two contract award update.
Good evening again, Deputy Chief LeBlanc, Chief Clark had a previous commitment, was unable to attend. This isn't really a contract per se, this was all part of the original contract that was signed, so this is just a clarification or a further explanation from the original document of what Castle and Booze will provide as the construction goes forward. The money is in the budget currently in the six hundred and, uh, or six million, um, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, and this actually came in less than the, uh, the money that we budgeted. So it's, it's budgeted in the, in the contract at two fourteen, and it's, um, this is two oh eight.
Thank you.
So, I think that, uh, what the architect was looking for was just a affirmation from the board of what they were gonna provide, and an understanding that this is what that money equaled. I don't think that there's any further action really that needs to be taken.
Right. Uh, Chris, you had indicated the same, uh, in terms of there's no change in the contract and that with the way we had done it originally.
Yeah, one of the things, uh, in this, I, I believe the, the deputy chief is right, that they came in, and Castle Booze has been straightforward with what the cost would be over the, the cycle. Uh, what the town elected to do is, when we did the design, uh, we actually did design up through the bid process, and then we stopped. Uh, it's always been traditional to have the, the company that does the design then do the oversight, uh, to make sure that what was designed is built, and that's what this piece does, is it just gives us that, um, reconciliation, that what was designed is gonna be built in accordance with that standard.
Okay, so, we, do we need to, we really don't need to take action?
As long as the board's aware that we'll, we'll go ahead and just, uh, uh, file the amendment and do the, the contract with them in this amount, that we're just kind of alerting the board that this work is coming up.
Right, so we don't need a motion?
It's within budget.
It's within budget, yeah.
Within the budget, it's already been cited as such, it's actually three grand under.
Right, six grand under, yeah.
Sorry, six grand under.
Can I take the opportunity to say something that's so elemental, that I think we were all missing it because you're standing here? People voted on this thing at town meeting, we were happy, we're moving forward with it, and I've had five bajillion people ask me, what are they doing across from Stop and Shop? What, what, what's being torn down there?
The, uh, the bank, we actually.
So I'd like people, since there's cameras on, to be able to understand, that's the station.
So I, and I wanted to just finish by giving just a brief update of where we are, but to your point, we actually took the, uh, construction signs that we had in the lobby that we used here for the presentation, and put them in Cape Cod Five, 'cause the manager at Cape Cod Five said they're getting a thousand questions a day as to, you know, what's going on over there. So, um, just for, for a quick update, um, the majority of the site work is done, the drainage is all on the ground. Uh, one holdup was we had to move the existing water main to Station Two. That work has been done, and footings are in the ground, and they're supposed to pour concrete tomorrow. So we're, uh, we're underway, and hopefully it'll be tight before winter, so, looking good.
That thrills me beyond belief, 'cause my cube shakes while you guys are doing this.
Yeah, I know, we got, we got a phone call the first day. We should be done with most of that, so.
On the other hand, my neighbors are happy that the flag is, uh, back up.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the signing of police department TASER lease contract.
So I, I know the deputy chief is, uh, in the, in the audience. Uh, this is, uh, in the capital budget, we had identified a, uh, a TASER lease contract. Uh, they have done their, uh, due diligence, went through the bid list, uh, and we are utilizing the town's contract. I believe everything has been signed off on, and we're just looking for the board's approval of, um, the, the overall contract.
Thank you, Chris. Does anyone have any questions, Larry, Michael, Ed?
No.
Don? Any other motion?
Yeah, I move we, uh, approve the agreement between Town of Harwich and, uh, the, for the,
Axon.
Axon Enterprise Incorporated, and from Scottsdale, Arizona, for the, uh, amount of, I'm trying to figure out the amount, sixty-five.
Sixty-five thousand, seven hundred.
Sixty-five thousand, seven hundred, uh, for the TASER contract.
Second.
Done.
Okay, done, seconded it?
Yeah, well, we both did.
Okay.
Don can have it.
Ties. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
I have one question, uh, and that is, uh, 'cause it comes up to me every so often, uh, fear of TASERS. But can you just, I know years ago you re, you did this, but just comment on what the training is?
Uh, the training for our officers, uh, primarily is, uh, we send people to Axon representatives for their actual training, train-the-trainer type thing. Then they come back and they train the individual, individual officers. The officers go through the day of training and subsequent tw- training as the year goes on, or years, and, uh, the very, uh, famous officers or the officers who, uh, uh, want to demonstrate that you can survive a TASER zap, uh, they aren't, they take TASER hit. Uh, most every officer, although not required, takes the hit, and just to see that what they're doing to the citizens are, if you have to, um, but it's a very valuable tool that we have, uh, because in the old days, it was you take out, um, whatever, you had a PR twenty-four and ask the baton, and you engage in hands-on, or in some cases, uh, some places may have the gun come out. This is the thing, it mo- it mobilizes the person most of the time, puts him on the ground, person complies most of the time, and then handcuffed. It's sa- more safety for our officer, reduces injuries, and it's a lot safer for the person.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, so no other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Jamie's volunteering to be taped, if you'd like.
On camera.
On tape.
Yeah, right, okay, Jamie. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay, uh, town administrators report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have, uh, uh, three items this evening. I, I just wanted the board to, uh, to be advised that we have, uh, started, uh, sending out the capital budget forms. Uh, those forms are due back on, uh, Friday, September twenty-first. Uh, just a few minor revisions to this, really. We have specifically asked for, uh, folks that are gonna apply for CPC applications to let us know, so we can incorporate that in. Uh, I did that a little, um, unofficially last year to, to try to capture that information, we did put it in. Uh, also, we do have in a list of what people, uh, were approved, or what was submitted before town meeting. I know there's been some concern that, you know, our, when eighteen is done, or nineteen is done, that it kind of disappears, and are people following that sequence from what was voted the year before? So I wanted to make sure that the, uh, out years were on there for people, so they can see that natural progression of, uh, requests and, and how long they've been, uh, in place. Uh, and then also, um, on kind of a last item, I know, uh, the capital outlay committee, which will be kind of, uh, starting to convene the end of September into October to do its work, uh, but that they were concerned that when the tech school came forward, uh, the tech school really has a significant impact on the taxes for the, for the town, and that, you know, that was a little bit of a surprise, so I, I have asked for, uh, Monomoy and Cape Tech, uh, and any other department that does, uh, longer-term capital plan, just to give us a heads-up, so we have a, a sense for what may be coming in the pipeline. Uh, so I have, um, actually, I've talked to the water department, which does, believe in our thirty-year plan, uh, so they would submit their thirty-year plan, and we met with Monomoy the other day, uh, so they will be submitting, uh, their plan, not in our forms, but at least so advisory-wise, we can see what they have. Uh, so that was something. Uh, the forms are pretty much in, in place, uh, similar forms to what we've used. Uh, the other thing that I've taken and done this year, uh, I think that we have people kind of index for inflation, so if somebody puts something three years out, they kind of guesstimate based upon now, and I just kind of left it to people to put their own inflationary factor in there. I don't know if people really understood what that meant, so I just kind of arbitrarily, if you would, uh, put in a, a five percent to get people to think that what you get a bid for today in three years from now, or five years from now, is gonna be different because of, uh, inflation. And a lot of times it's not, people will see inflation and say, well, inflation's only two percent. Uh, a lot of times, construction inflation tends to run a lot higher, particularly in this area. So to try to address some of that concern, uh, we've added that to the forms. So I just wanted to kind of give the board the, uh, information for what was distributed, and, uh, what you will see, uh, hopefully coming back, uh, in terms of that.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, i- if I might, I'd just like, uh, to make sure that, to all the department people who would be putting, be subject to all of this, that they understand that irrespective of the funding source, it's fifty thousand in the charter, it could be, uh, a debt exclusion, it could be appropriations, it could be a revolving fund, it's still required, that if you're gonna do something that's fifty thousand or more, you still need to have it in as a submission for, as a capital project.
Yes, um.
It doesn't mention anything in the charter about what the funding source would be.
Yeah, that, that's absolutely right, and we did make, uh, I did put a, uh, extra clause in, which I'm trying to see, that, um, no matter what the amount is, they have to let me know what it is, so we can at least plan for it. I, I get the charter has fifty thousand, but if somebody puts their request for forty thousand, we still need to identify a funding source to, to pay for it.
Sure, and the only reason I mention that is because
Yeah, no, I.
there's an increasing reliance on revolving funds in the town. Uh, I don't want anybody feeling that, whether it's wrecking youth, or cemeteries, or golf, or whatever, that because, i- i- in essence, it almost comes out as, because it's funny money, it's not really the town's treasury money, uh, as, uh, tax collections, that we're not subject to that. It has nothing to do with that, it has everything to do with the, the governance of the town. If it's fifty or more, they still need to secure the, uh, the approval of town meeting.
Absolutely. So that, that material is, 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 uh, in there, and we have, um, another department heads meeting coming up, so we will reemphasize that, that point.
Okay, that's all I ask.
On the, um, two thousand eighteen navigational dredging, uh, pilot program, uh, they took the Mass Works program, they'd be in the state, and kind of amended it for how it operates, and they allocated a certain amount to, uh, having, uh, specific projects relative to, uh, dredging. Uh, this is actually, I think, probably unique in the time I've been doing this, that the, the state came out and basically gave two we- two weeks for people to submit applications. And I just want to compliment, uh, John Rendell for putting together an application, uh, but he put together an application, and, uh, he, the total request was for seventy-two thousand, thirty-six thousand is the grant, thirty-six thousand from town sources. Uh, we do have that in the budget, he has that allocated, uh, and actually, he submitted it within two weeks, and they made a decision within three weeks. Uh, I, I don't remember ever having a decision that quickly come out of a, a state bureaucracy, uh, and we were successful, John was successful in putting that together and obtaining thirty-six thousand dollars. And Lieutenant Governor came down to do the presentation, um, last week, I think it was, as a matter of fact. Uh, and then we also got a secondary, uh, grant, this is more due to, uh, the efforts of, um, Lincoln Hooper and his folks at the, uh, at the, the recycling area, uh, that we have been, again, recognized. I think almost every year I've been here, we have received this grant, uh, the recycling dividends program, grant of twelve thousand, one hundred dollars for sustainable material recovery. So I just wanted to, uh, come in publicly, uh, uh, send out a appreciation to the folks down at the. So I just wanted to, uh, come in publicly, uh, uh, send out a appreciation to the folks down at the DPW for continuing to do a, um, a good job with the, uh, operation down there. And I know we're meeting Monday, so I'll have, uh, some additional material for Monday. But that concludes my report for this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Selectmen's report, Don?
Uh, well, Ed and I are gonna be riding on the selectmen's float at the, uh, parade, uh, but since it's his pickup truck, I'm not sure that that doesn't put me alone in the bed of it.
Uh, well, figure that it.
But apparently, Larry got a better deal from another organization. They're paying him more.
I'm hoping to split my time, Ed, so I'm hoping we're close enough.
Just run up to the bed, and I'll pick you up, and.
I don't understand what, we're both on, on the same, where is it? They asked you, they didn't ask me.
And Julie and Michael.
I could've left him alone in the bed.
Well, I, I expect to be able to tag team with the other Don over there, so that there will always be a Don on the truck. Uh, but I gather that the two of you have better deals off Cape, like Bedford or.
I do, I have, I have my niece's birthday, who I cannot miss. It's her sixteenth birthday, so.
Oh, sweet sixteen.
And Michael's got a different parade than him, right?
Ed?
That's it, no.
Nothing?
No.
Michael?
Nothing.
No, nothing.
It's my anniversary, getting it home.
So, uh, let's, uh, adjourn the meeting.
Moving, adjourn.
Moving, second.
Thank you.